I'll just start with us tonight, we have Virgil Blanke and Blake Bahan with the H O G. And I think Virgil's gonna talk about the interconnect agreement first and then get into the cost of service thing, is that correct Virgil?
That's correct. Okay, so we were, we worked with the city to create the interconnect policy. And basically what that is, is rules and regulations revolve regarding any customer that wants to put renewable energy behind their meter. So, so like for instance, the residential customer decides they want to put solar panels on behind their meter, then this policy lays out how they'll be credited back, where are the requirements, the electrical requirements for the connection, who pays for the meter, the replacement meter, and what type of load limitations they have. So walk, I guess you guys have a copy of the policy in front of you. So I have multiple screens here, so if I look away from the camera, I'm just looking at a different screen to read the policy, to go through the policy with you. Um, so the first major, okay, there's a lot of items in there about like IEEE and electric, uh, national electric code standards about how the connection's made. We want to make sure that if there's a power outage, that a solar panel or some other type of generation doesn't push back into your system and cause an issue for your, a safety issue for your lineman. So that's covered in a lot of the different state, electrical standards. So that's why there's a lot of discussion in there about the electrical standards that they have to meet in order to interconnect, and it's for safety reasons. But the main, um, the main point I think that you guys will be interested in is how is it metered? How do they get credited? And what size are we going to allow? So the policy states that anyone asking for a facility of 10 KW or less is going to be, is going to be granted. That's a typical residential rooftop insulation. So, um, so basically you're saying that we're going to allow any of our customers to do that. And then anything between 10 and 100, so if they want a larger sized facility, they would have to, it can't be any more than 80% of their peak load. And then, um, and that would be limited to 100 KW. So if, for example, you had a, a commercial business that has a 55 KW, or 50 KW load, then you would let them put 40 KW on of, of renewable energy behind their meter. And then anything above 100 KW would be on a case by case basis. So that's how we structured the, um, the ability to put the, the solar on. This addresses almost all, I'd say 90% of your applicants are going to be residential. And so this addresses and allows residential to pretty much put on whatever fits on their roof. Uh, so that, so that covers those. As far as commercial goes, like the, the above 10 is typically always commercial. So, um, that is just kind of tied down a little bit to where you don't have a facility that has a 50 KW peak putting in 300 KW of generation and pushing back 100% of the time. So that's what we have to be careful with. So this policy is very friendly toward any type, any residential customer wanting to put on renewable energy. And then it's case by case, if you want to do the larger customer. This is pretty common with other municipals. So I would also make sure that when you start to do the case by case, because you will get application, that we, that you were very, you have to be very consistent in how you allow that. So anything that is, is really large, I would be concerned about how that's going to impact your finances of the city, how it's going to impact the infrastructure that you have in there. So that's why the policy is written towards really allowing residential and small commercial, which is very common these days with municipal utilities. So as far as how they get credited, um, the metering would be changed to what's called a bidirectional meter. And that's a meter that measures power flow in either direction. So we call kilowatt hours delivered, that's what the utility provides to the customer. And then kilowatt hours received is what the customer, what the utility receives from the customer. So the delivered and received words are all based on the, the utility's perspective. So for any kilowatt hours that are delivered to the customer, that means in them, they have a, they have a solar panel on their house. And during that meter reading period, they consume energy off of the city. That's kilowatt hours delivered, you will charge them at full retail rate for those kilowatt hours. And then if, so their, their, their solar panel is going to be generating most of the time, you know, but anytime that is sunny. So most months are going to have a little bit of generation. That generation will offset any of their native organic load, and then they will pull off the city anything else that they need. In the, in an instance, over the billing period, when they have, are generating more than they need at that moment in time, they will push back their excess onto the city's system. That's called kilowatt hours received, received by the utility. So those kilowatt hours will be credited at the avoided cost rate for the city, meaning that you would take your average cost per kilowatt hour of wholesale power from your power provider, RPGI, for that particular billing period, and that would be credited back. So for an example, if, if I have a generating facility, I have, I have solar panels behind my meter, and this one particular month, I generated, okay, 1,000 kilowatt hours. Look, so, but I used 400 of those myself, okay? So that 400 is not being metered anywhere, so just understand that part, okay? So then I have these 600 kilowatt hours of extra. So, but I also needed another 1,000 kilowatt hours, so I'll pay for that 1,000 kilowatt hours at full retail rate. And then I will get credit at avoided costs for the 600 that I pushed back on the system. But what that means is I actually used 1,400 kilowatt hours that month. What gets confusing to folks is that 400 kilowatt hours that the solar panel created, that you, that the customer consumed, that wasn't being metered, if that makes any sense. That's not being attributed to any cost or anything at all. That's just their saving of what they're, of the load that, that they use that's being offset by the, the panels that they put in. So really, you're only looking at kilowatt hours delivered and received, what goes through the utility meter. So in this example, 1,000 kilowatt hours went from the utility to the customer, full retail rate. 600 kilowatt hours was excess that month, and we got pushed back to the utility. So they pay 1,000 kilowatt hours at full retail, and 600 they would get credited at what your avoided cost rate is, which is effectively your wholesale rate. Does that make sense? So you have any questions on how that's, how that's metered and billed?
So, so then they would get, so that would reflect, the credit then would be reflected, and that all would be listed on their billing statement, like the full amount, then the, um, the credit for what was generated on their part. And then the sub, the, the central, or the total, the difference of what they owe to the utility.
So, correct. And so logistically, what that looks like is, um, first of all, because you have ENCODE, and ENCODE won't, if, if you end up with a credit, like let's say that they, they only buy 500 kilowatt hours off of the, delivered from the utility that month, but they push back 3,000 kilowatt hours. So in totality, their, their bill is negative, okay? You would, you will need to set them up a separate account that's electric only. Otherwise, when they come in to pay the rest of their services, like their water, sewer, the credits are going to flow to those other utilities, just by the way ENCODE does it. So if I'm going, if I'm the new customer that's going to put on kilo, um, solar panels behind my meter, you need to give me two city accounts, one account for electric and one account for everything else. And I know that sounds, that sounds, um, different, but not difficult, but like just kind of a pain. But otherwise, if they are in a situation where they push back a lot in one month, and their bill, their electric bill becomes negative, that credit will not stay with the electric fund. When they come in to pay the rest of their bill.
You said that that is a function of ENCODE, the way that ENCODE works.
And it's not just ENCODE, it's other municipal billing systems that are all kind of that way, because you're billing more than one utility on the same bill.
Right.
Is there any that you know of that allow that to happen without the two accounts?
No. I, we've not, we, we've seen four or five different systems, and they all work the same way, because they're all billed on the same bill. So, um, there's no way that we found to direct that credit towards electric only. So the way around it is to get them to separate accounts. So that way, if there's a credit on electric, it carries forward to the next month on the electric bill. So with the, so logistically, the way this looks, so let's talk about this, the one customer that has an electric bill only, and they bill, they purchase 600 kilowatt hours, for instance, from, from the city, and then they push back 2,000. So the 600 kilowatt hours will cost them like $70, let's say. But they're pushing back 2,000 kilowatt hours, and that might be a credit of like $95. So they would have a negative $25, so a $25 carry forward credit to the next month. But if you leave them on the same bill, when they come in, like hey, their water, sewer, ga, garbage bill, that's what you have, if you have garbage on your bill as well, then those services are probably going to be more than $25, so that $25 credit will offset the cost of those. And you, you want that all to stay in the electric fund. So, so that's how that would work. And then most, most months, they're not going to push back that much, just is, in the Midwest, solar panels are not that efficient. So you might see pushback in August, maybe July, when it's really sunny every day. Um, so you may see this a couple months out of the year, but you're probably not going to see it very often.
I was just gonna ask if you would see a credit occurring on a multiple month basis, but you haven't noticed that due to?
You, in the summer, you can see it building, you know, so you may have a credit two months in a row, like July, August, and then it's going to true, it's going to catch itself up by the end of the, of the spring, I mean, end of the fall.
I'm, I'm just curious, stupid question, but if, on the example you've mentioned, where they were billed for kilowatt hours, you said to make cost $70 or something, but then they pushed back more to cause a credit, then why would there be, if they generated more to push back, there wouldn't be an electric bill?
So you're doing, what you're talking about is a one for one credit instead of an avoided cost credit. So what you're saying is I, um, that is another way to do it. It's not the way that we recommend that you do it. There are costs associated in having an electric system attached to them to be on demand and provide them energy at any point in time. So if you, if they push back and they offset one for one, you are actually giving them more than, they, giving them more than the cost they offset. So if you give them avoided costs, where, let's say your host, your retail cost is 10 cents, but your wholesale cost is six. So you charge them 10 cents a kilowatt hour, but you credit them back six. It is like the, the city saying, I don't care who I buy my power from, Joe consumer or RPGI, it costs me the same amount of money. Because that, that what you're crediting back to them, that 2,000 kilowatt hours, or whatever kilowatt hours they do back to your system, that is, you're going to use that, and other customers are going to buy that, those kilowatt hours. So it's as if you did, you, it offsets what you have to buy from RPGI.
Okay, okay.
So they become like a little tiny wholesale that pays back?
Right, yeah, it's, it fits in with the wholesale category rather than the re, it's the difference between the retail and wholesale, basically.
And basically, from the city's perspective, you're buying it from a Joe consumer, or you're buying it from RPGI, but you're, but it's the same cost. And that's the way you keep your city whole.
Yeah.
And also, ENCODE and most other municipal billing systems can't do one for one. Like they, they can't take the two registers and net them out very easily. You can with what's called a net meter, where you get one reading, and it will net it internally. So that can be done. Um, when it becomes negative, it, when that reading is negative, it causes some havoc in your billing system. So, but this is again, a very common way that municipals are, are doing the credit back.
With, with what you said in mind, that it's, it would be rare for somebody to be pushing that much back, and probably, at least at first, not that many customers doing this anyway. I mean, I fully understand the concept of keeping the electric with the electric, but do you ever see, just for simplicity sake, cities letting those funds pay back together?
Absolutely. If you have five or 10 customers, it doesn't really matter, but once it becomes a problem, then it becomes a lot of things to separate.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Probably better engage with them separated.
Yeah, it's, sometimes it's just easier from day one.
Would you agree with that, sure?
Yes, I would say if we are going to go that route, that we would do it from the beginning, because if we have to go back and try and catch up, that's a lot of reversing items off of the account to be able to pull them apart. So I would say if that's the route, then we need to start with a electric, and then the water, sewer, garbage, recycling, stormwater on a separate account. And we can remove that electric off the main account and just build them a new one. So that's fine.
And I know ENCODE has a, like a meter, sub-meter type situation, where you could potentially consolidate the billing to where they receive one bill, but that's beyond what I know about ENCODE now, I just know that it's possible.
And we could do it on a statement bill to where they were able to have both of those, so they didn't have to get individual bills. We could just put it on statement billing and push it out for both of those accounts, so that's not a problem. Yeah, it would be exactly like that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So are there any questions about the interconnect policy? That's kind of the nuts and bolts of it.
Let me just make sure that I'm clear about the, um, kind of the breakpoints that you laid out. So the policy would state that anything under 10 kilowatt, wait, how do I say that exactly?
Kilowatts, right.
10 kilowatts?
No, so kilowatts is a capacity, and kilowatt hours is a, is an energy consumption.
Ed is rolling his eyes over at me right now.
But you know, it's funny, it, it's amazing that you're asking for clarification on that, because almost every council we present to, they just call everything kilowatt hours. Or they call every kilowatt hour a kilowatt, and you know, it's kind of funny. But KW, kilowatts, is the capacity that you're allowing, so the size of it, and then kilowatt hours is how much is, is the actual energy it produces.
Okay, gotcha. I think, I think I understand that, with that explanation, thank you. So anything under 10 kilowatts capacity would be granted, that would be, you're, you're going to get it if you're asked, basically. And then you said up to 100 kilowatts, um, so how, how was that?
Good, 80% of your peak load. So if a customer at, that wants over 10, they would, you would look and see what their peak has been, and historically, like over the last 12 months, and if, and let's say it's 50 KW, then you'd let them put 40 on.
Okay, so I'll, also, you know, almost an automatic, um, yes, except only up to the 80% mark.
Right. So that way, they're offsetting their particular load, they're not like just becoming a generator.
Right, that's all right, okay.
That has to be proven load. It's not automatic, it's proven, they, that load has to be proven, that if they're going to put on, uh, 50 KW worth of panels, that that's going to be 80% of their load. So it's proven, that's not a given, it has to be a proven.
Well, you have to establish what their load is. So, um, to Ed's point, that sometimes you may not have a domain meter on that particular customer if they're existing. So we can help you do some back calculations and determine what we think their peak is. Or they can put a, if it's in the summertime, or the heavy winter, when they have a lot of electric heat, you could put a, um, a meter, you can just put a meter on it, then they can put a monitor, a power monitor on it, and we can determine what it is. But there are ways to back into that cow, that calculation with, like, what kind of business is it? Is it like a bank, or is it like a 24-hour mini mart? You know, those kind of things, we can, we can use that, that information and their kilowatt hour usage and back into what we expect it to be.
I came late, so I apologize if you already talked about this, but, so do we have people in town that maybe have all of our utilities but not electricity for some reason?
Like just water, sewer, yes. So some of the people on the outskirts do, um, like if you're looking more towards like Prairie Street and stuff like that. And some of our accounts are actually set up where our renters have electric, and then our landlords have, carry the water portion. So there are situations like that, where if it happened to be a apartment or duplex, or something like that, um, where we would have to take a look at setting that up a little bit differently.
And so for the renters, is that two accounts, then the, the tenant's electric bill, and then the landlord?
Correct, yep, yep.
But, but the landlord probably have to allow the solar.
Correct. And that's what I'm saying, like if the landlord only paid water and they put solar panels on, then at that point in time, we would have to create a new account.
That would be an important point right there. Make sure you check with the owner. I mean, if it's tenant, you know, they, they want.
Yeah.
They'll be, it would be submitted by the tenant, it'd have to go from the landlord, if it's a good structure.
Not that they wouldn't try it though.
Correct.
Yeah, because something that's significant, you have to keep the building covered, you know?
Well, it'd be expected.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess they could try, but it, it goes to, for application. Is there any that's not the problem, or just?
Um, what other questions does council have for?
They probably wouldn't do anything if their tenants are paying for the electric, but if it would. So, so under the interconnection cost, the customer shall reimburse utility for cost impaired by the utility for all cost connection switching, metering, transmission discretion, safety provisions, and administrative costs directly related to the installation and maintenance of the physical facilities. So basically, uh, the property owner wouldn't be able to just go and install this, correct? It, it'd have to go through our utility first, and?
They have to submit the plan.
Yeah.
If you looked in that packet there, there's, they have to submit plans, and then has to call the guidelines, and the interconnect policy agreement. And then that, once those plans have been submitted and approved, then they have to, they will install, uh, said device, and prior to it being energized, it has to be inspected.
But the installation would be through the city?
No.
Or any?
We don't do anything, we'll stick a meter into it.
Meter, okay, so?
And inspected.
And inspected. So any maintenance installation that would be on the property owner, if you were on track with somebody else?
Yeah, it's all after the meter, so it's all on them, city has nothing to do with it.
Does the city?
Unless it's not authorized, unless it's not authorized, one of the catch.
So have we looked into yet, or maybe you all talked about this already, if there's any incentives for the city to do this, as like on a higher level? Like an incentive from our state or federal government for trying to be more, yeah, eco-friendly or anything like that, or maybe for large, like large, like, back?
Well, I just, I don't.
Well, and maybe if we get more money, or grants, or something to help people. Oh, or anyway, from residential. Yeah, maybe it's for property owners to, to do this, some kind of incentive, because I know it's really costly, and it takes a long time for the investment to pay off.
There are a lot of federal incentives for, um, like tax incentives for, for people to put on, um, to put on renewable energy. And those tend to change from year to year, so, and then also they change from state to state. So I don't know what Iowa specifically is doing, but I know that the federal government has programs. And typically, the state program's just pancake on top of that.
And that's going to benefit the property owner, not the city.
Right. Just to encourage the installation of, it's, so truly, the, what is the cost to the city? You know, as long as you do an avoided cost buyback, then the, what you lose out in is the sale of the energy of what their, um, customer, what, what they're generating that they consume on their own. So you, you lose out on that energy, but you know, you're not buying it either on a wholesale side. So you lose on, and then margin on that. Um, and that's not, it's concept, that's why anything under 10 KW is really not a big number, unless like every customer you have does it. Um, but then, you know, when you buy back at avoided cost, then it's indifferent to you who you buy your electric, you know, wholesale power from. So then that protects the city as well. But other than that, the out of pocket cost is to replace the meter with a bidirectional meter. And most of the meters you get now come with that capability. Some companies require you to pay for the, it's for it to be turned on, some companies just, it's just part of the meter.
And what I'm saying is like, it could benefit the city, say if I, if I have enough means to build solar power, power, you know, and I'm getting these tax credits or whatever, and then I choose to invest that money into the city in other ways, or into the economy in other ways.
Right.
You, you probably don't see it, but, you know, you never know.
It's indirect.
Yeah. So is there, do we have to update, like, is there specific fees or spes, specific like categories for your department in regards to, like, do you have a disconnect, so the solar, I mean, is there something specific we have put in place? For?
That would be just, I'm not that I'm aware of. I mean, if there was a violation, it'd just be an electric violation.
Okay.
They'd be disconnected, they don't, right, no, if, if we found out that they did this, uh, behind their back, which I know that there's at least one in town that has it installed, I don't know if it's, I know that's one of them sold, um, without approval, uh, that, uh, that we would go in, issue, uh, probably you might, if we didn't notice, the city needs to be correct, or we, we will know this is not your service.
So, I think you would know if they put it on without, you know, well, you may not know. They're hard to miss when you see them physically. But if they were to put on a solar panel without talking to you all first, and you didn't change to a bidirectional meter, a traditional meter measures kilowatt hours, it, it's one increment, no matter which direction it flows. So when they push back to the city, they're paying full retail for that, because all it's doing is ticking the meter up. So it's not bidirectional, it's not measuring plus or minus, it's measuring every drop flow as one, as a positive one.
They could potentially be paying twice as much.
Yeah, correct, correct. So it's not in their best interest not to tell you.
Yeah, because it's, it won't distinguish what's the?
It won't, because a, a, a traditional meter measures power flow, it doesn't care if it's reverse or forward, and it just measures it as an increment, if that's one, that's two, that's three, I don't care which, which, if it's positive or negative.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Virgil, this is, uh, you know, your recommendation for how to, how to lay this out. Could you, I mean, would it be okay to briefly tell us what other alternatives you have seen? Are there other ways to do it that?
So there are, um, you could open up your, uh, your size restraints, and, um, there are some places that will do it, um, 100% of their load up to 25. Um, there, I've seen also them do it, um, anything, anything of below 25 is automatically, um, approved, but anything above 25 is, um, case by case. So it's, it's, it's really a mixed bag, it is what you're comfortable with.
Ratios, yeah.
Say again?
You're saying different cities play around with those ratios in different ways.
They do, they do. And so, so that's, and then the other option that you have is to do a one for one credit. Um, what I, if you have a big utility that has millions of customers, doing a one for one credit is not going to impact you very much. And also, those utilities have a line item bill on everyone's bill, it doesn't matter if you have so renewable energy or not, it's a renewal energy charge, so that way they can pay for those things. Um, in order for the city not to charge other customers, like raise everyone's bill to cover this, then if you do avoid a cost, it protects you in the sense of, it doesn't matter who you're buying your power from. But that's, that's what you're going to see, is in order to pay for a program like this, you're going to see a surcharge for, um, renewable energy on everyone's bill. If you start doing one for one credits and you, and you lift the restraints up.
And do you have things you want to, you know, comment on that, or do you want to?
Well, I'd work with Virgil on this, fast here, so, uh, we, it's, it's good.
This is really, and Virgil's question, I'm going to extend a long time, yeah.
I guess the only other thing that I know of, and I, I don't believe even, I don't know if the logic would be changing now, Virgil, but I know at some point, uh, the RPGI, I mean, so this conversation of not allowing, let's just. Let's just say a hundred percent of the town to go completely. Solar, but you're only you're only allow. X amount of percentage to do it, so you don't lose your load capability of your town.
That's a good point, uh, we have seen those, I call them subscription limits, like once we get to a thousand KW, we're stopping, right? Um, I've seen those and they get severely challenged by the, um. By the, uh, pro, um, environmentalist, I guess you want to say, or post-alarm folks. Um, the better thing to do is to make it. Easily accessible for all of your residents to do it and very scrutinized for anything bigger than that. Because you're trying to make this as a service to your residential customers to offset their cost of electricity. And and then be able to control, like you have to still pay for your system. You still, and they still want on-demand power, so on a rainy day, they still want you to provide them a hundred percent of what they need. And there's a cost associated with that, because you have to maintain your system, because. If you you still have to have a twenty-megawatt system. Because one day you might need all that.
Yeah. And so that that's the reason why when we did this, we set that, uh, the. The the ten K, the ten KB limit as like. Pretty much anybody can do anything, once you start getting above that number. You have to justify why it is that you're going to be. Installing that much and drawing and removing that much usage off of our system.
Yeah.
Is the point, is the point of the ten. Uh, because like, like you say that. Realistically, the odds of somebody actually using. Two thousand KW. In a month, unless you're all electric heat, then it's just like frigid, cold out.
Wow.
Slim. So, uh, yeah. You know, that that's, and then and then to be able to push that back. You know, Iowa is not like Arizona, you know. Where you got sun continually.
Right.
No clouds.
Midwest, they're about seventeen percent efficient in the Midwest, so whatever size you put on, you'll get about seventeen seventeen percent over the course of the year of capacity out of that.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Wow.
That's that's a Midwest, that's a Midwestern average. So. I mean, think about that, you know, you have to have some type of incentive to put that on, because it's not cost-effective.
So when we're talking about ten, ten KW. That would be the actual capacity of the unit, and they're only really going to be. Getting seventeen percent of that, is what you're saying.
So if you think, correct, so ten K to, ten KW is probably the size of a typical residential roof, okay? And then if you think about it, like maybe seventeen percent of the hours out of a year, it actually would be working. And generating anything. So if that, if those hours happen to be in the summer where you have your air conditioner off and you're not home, you're going to be pushing back on the system.
Then over the course of time, that that number then, and then it's it's a short period of time. You only get that that high quality of usage out of the solar system. For broadly in the first three years, after your first three years, the panels then. Are dirty and, uh, then your efficiency then drops from there on. So the aver- so the average cost of a, of a, of. It it, well, let me put it this way, it roughly takes between. Thirteen and eighteen years to repay the cost of the solar panel on a house. It's just a lot of house, and by the time you hit that eighteen to twenty-year mark. Your panels are so, are producing so much less than it. Yeah, your your cost effectiveness. Is is way low, but I I mean, I get why people do it. They don't really really go extra, by the time you hit twenty-year mark.
Like a Prius, like a nightcat battery, yeah, like a nightcat battery.
Yes, like buying a Tesla three years later, the battery's low. What's a nice thing? Well, it's a, you know, possibly twelve years.
Do we know if it adds or reduces property, um, like values to a house, like I'm thinking of someone to. Wanted to resell their home.
I think it would depend on the age of the unit. And also, if you think about it, whenever you're getting ready to put one of these on, you have to have a newer or newer roof. So that could add a whole another level of cost if your roof is needing to be replaced in the next five years, you're not going to put solar panels on it. So, um, so there's a lot of layers in there, but I think that if you were in the very beginning. Like the first three or four years of having a solar panel, I think maybe would add value, because there are a lot of people that are very interested in that. Um, if that solar panel has been on for more than ten years, I think that now you have a maintenance issue that you wouldn't have otherwise without something on your. On your roof, you have a questionable amount of efficiency. And life expectancy, and then let's say it's ten years old, by the time if you wait, if you get it out to twenty years. You're going to have to get a new roof as well, so you're automatically accelerating the cost of a new roof.
Yeah, I was thinking. From if we ever able to add more homes, like as an option, a developer might provide a family who's building their home. You know, as in addition to the cost of the home, do you want solar panels?
So oftentimes, it's so, okay, so A, the solar panels are not going to be affordable unless you get government, um, subsidies, okay? They all come through income tax credit. So it would be, I I'm just thinking of what does the structure look like that a developer, I mean, they could help you, they could help you find a. They could have a some type of arrangement with a solar installation company where they could try to do some bulk buying. But I think that at the end, the customer itself is the person that's going to have to, um. Contract for that in order to get the tax credits to make it affordable. And then to that point, if you sell your house and you you get, I don't know how tax credits are structured a hundred percent, sometimes it's like all in the first year or whatever. If you've already got all the tax credit, then. What does that look like as far as value when you're selling it to someone else?
Right.
That's a very good question, that's the first time anybody's ever asked that.
I don't know if it's in there or not, but I. But, uh, we need to, probably, I mean, have to look at the. The solar arrays panels setup. But, uh, probably within the policy, but. Probably, you know, what solar panels show in everyone's fact are.
Ooh, that's a good, that's a good.
Well, you get a brand-new roof when you get a brand-new house, so that I can maybe think of that when you said that. Somebody is beginning to.
Wouldn't want them all, everybody's front yard is to be solar panels.
That becomes a zoning issue, and so I think with zoning, you'll, um, have to, and like building, building permits too. There are a lot of towns that in their building permits prohibit it from being anywhere but on a roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, we need to check and make sure that's in there.
Yeah. I'm trying to also like think ahead and probably, you know, time for another, you know, meeting or. A subject for another meeting, just like what would be attractive to people to move to our town and to build. You know, some people may be like, yes, solar, you know, it's an option for this new home, so.
I think the value there would be if you had a developer that was, um, developing like a fifty-house subdivision or something like that, that they could partner up with. Um, a reputable solar company to where they could. Give you some economies of scale by putting on multiple ones.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be at the developers' level, not necessarily at the city's level.
Oh, correct, but but if you had a developer wanting to come in and do that and and build a subdivision, you could certainly. Talk with them about that as some, another way to offer a service to your, um, to your customers and your residents.
Great, okay.
Um. We probably shouldn't, if you have any other questions, we probably should move on to the cost service study. You know, what what we'll have to do is probably take a look at the zoning. Find out from you if you want to make sure that they're all on roofs versus being in the yard, and then we'll have to create an ordinance to to allow this to. Sounds good. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to the, uh, great design study.
Okay, awesome, well, we may need to, I don't know how much time we have, is this meeting just until seven?
Seven thirty.
Oh, okay, great, um, so, because I'll use every minute you give me. I was joking, so anyway, uh, okay, so cost of service, a little bit bigger, a topic, a little bit more detail. Um, and I believe you probably have the preliminary report in front of you, um, so. Well, let's, I don't want to go through it line by line, but I want to summarize, um, what is on a lot of the exhibits that you see. So if you look towards the middle of your, um, data, you'll see exhibit one. Um, and that is the la- we, that's our model year, we always start with the last audited year, which was twenty-one. And then we, then we project forward for the rest of the year, so if we go to exhibit two, that's twenty-twenty-two with. Ten months of actual data and two months of estimated data, um, because we compiled this quite a few months back, so, um. I want to start there as the basis for projection. So, be, so I'm looking at page one of exhibit two. Oh, I can do that, right, okay. Blake, do you want to, can you share that page?
I'm not finding the exhibit.
Was because of the page numbers are punched out.
Oh, no. Can you share page, um, page one of exhibit two?
Oh, I know, you you gotta look on the side, present it to. It's right here.
Oh, okay.
It's punched out, yes.
Punched out online.
You want, Blake, do you want me to share it?
I can't see it.
Yeah, that's the way to see where we're at.
I got it. Okay. So. There's five pages, does ever, is everybody, can you everybody see this okay?
Oh, but. Yeah. Do you want the lights dim more? Uh-huh, do you need the lights dim more? I think that might help a little bit, I'm I'm having trouble seeing it, or maybe I need to go the eye doctor. Is it summary schedule on the top?
Yes, it is, summary schedule, and then on the bottom, it'll say exhibit two, page one.
One of five, okay.
Yeah. So every exhibit has five pages, every annual model, and the first page is a summary of all the other pages. So we'll spend most of our time talking on on page one. So this is a twenty-twenty-two projection that has, um, based on ten months of actual data. In the first, so there's four or five metrics we look at, and we kind of, you have to look at them all together, because independently, um, they all depend upon one another, so if you. Make a change based on one metric, um, you, it may not, it would be a different recommended change without looking at the other metrics. The first thing I want to look at is line sixteen, which is your rate of return. For the system total, then you go across to the, um, customer classes. And you see that the rate of return for the system is eleven point eight-five percent. And as you go across, you see that, um, residential's thirteen, commercials eight, municipals twelve, and then large industrial's eleven. So. Look at two things there, I look at the system total, and that's, that we recommend that number be between twelve and twenty percent. And that's a really wide gap, and that twelve to twenty percent. You're either at the bottom, or that we push you to the bottom or the top based on other factors. Do you have large capital projects that you're trying to raise funding for? Do you have enough reserves, or do you need to build reserves in your system? Those are the main things that we're looking at, um, but overall, eleven percent is not bad. And then we look at, how does it look across the customer classes, are they skewed wildly? Or are they somewhat similar, because ideally, you want that eleven percent to be the same number across every customer class. And you can set that and make that happen once, and then as soon as you cha- as soon as. Um, residents move out and new residents move in, or one business closes and another business starts. You're going to be off, because not everybody has the same load profile, so you try to get as close as possible. But looking at the thirteen, the eight, the twelve, the eleven, they're really not off that much. Oftentimes, we see something like a minus ten and a positive three. And, um, and then a positive thirty-five, so really, those aren't off that much. Uh, so the good news, and that we call that a cross subsidy, you really don't have a lot of of standout cross subsidies in your system. Um, the other thing I want to note is if you look across line four, you see your operating revenue, it is half. Is industry, is in, is your industry. And then. Another more than, so like I said, thirty percent-ish is residential, and then the commercial and municipal make up the smaller amount. So just kind of knowing where you're heavily weighted, so again, it's about half to in, to your large industry. And then your residential is probably the thirty-five percent range. Um. And what that means is that when you start to mess with the ra- the revenue requirements. Something that you do to, like, a penny a kilowatt hour residential is going to skew things a whole lot heavier than a penny a kilowatt hour to commercial. And that's why, um, we point that out. The other thing that we want to talk about is your reserves, so right now, you have, we looked at like your schedule of how much you have in reserves. Um. And how much you have in capital projects that are slated. And right now, after you finish your slated capital projects, you should have about a million dollars left in reserves. The number we really look for is nothing less than a million, because as you all know, if you have a transformer that fails at the substation, you could spend six or seven hundred thousand dollars in about an hour. Um, so electric system items are expensive, so we want to make sure we have enough money in reserves to cover something, um, if it breaks. Um, if we have a catastrophic catastrophic failure, also, if you were to have a storm. Um, you need, we could spend two, three hundred thousand dollars in three or four days just rebuilding part of your system. And oftentimes, we'll hear towns say, well, but I'll get FEMA money, well, you might, and you and you'll get seventy-five percent of what they approve, and you'll get it two years later. So that's why we need a level of reserves. Also, if you have a customer that's interested in coming in, like a large load, or like a subdivision. It's going to take capital to go out and be ready to serve them, and if you tell them not now, that's like telling them no. So we want to make sure that there's enough, uh, enough, um, in your reserve to be able to put a few hundred thousand dollars out toward extending. Your system for, um, long-term customers. So you're a little under where we want you to, we want you to be at fifty to one hundred percent of your annual expenses. And your annual expenses are four point eight million on line thirteen, so I really want to see you at over two, a little over two million. So, um, so you're a little under, but you're at a million, which is better than. Most times when I give this presentation. So it's not awful, it doesn't mean that you need to be at a margin of twenty percent, it just means it needs to be more than. It needs to be around the twelve or pushing it, so you can start building that over time. And if you look at this summary schedule again, and we look at item fourteen, that's your operating income. So you see that if you maintain this. Then you'll be, you'll have an extra six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into reserves. Um, as long as you don't, um, spend more than that on capital, you know, anything you spend out of capital comes out of that six fifty-two. But other than that, so you will be able to build those reserves pretty, um. Pretty decently within eleven percent margin, so we don't think that right now you need to push that really heavy. Also, this model has personnel costs for your electric department, and what we call a right size. Um, you really can't effectively get a lot done when you have only three people in the electric department, we we know that you really need to see four. Um, a lot of times municipals, they typically have a generous time off packages, so oftentimes, there's usually a person off. Um, or often often off a lot, so you you need those three people to be able to do anything besides maintenance. And you want to have, um, an electric. Department that can go and build something and put in new services and extend underground electric, do a little bit of. Um. Of line construction, but you can't do that with a very small department, so we did put in the personnel cost. To make sure we have four people in the department. So I just want to point that out. So we're starting from a good spot, okay, so that that's great news. But then we look at two things, what happens over time, and then also, what happens if you potentially lose a large industrial customer? So when we looked at that, um, if we go to exhibit, um. Twenty twenty-three A, which one, is that, is that the number three? No, that's twenty, yeah, that's the first twenty twenty-three, this is what happens. This is just what happens over time, do you, is this, do you have that one up, Blake? Twenty twenty-three, like the next, the next exhibit, page one.
Did it not pull up, it's probably, I'm sharing a.
I am, um, I can't tell, I can't see the headers and footer, so I don't know what year this is.
Okay, let me redo it.
It's pretty hard for us to see the screen, actually, the numbers, so can you.
Okay, so exhibit three, page one, is what we want to go to. So this is what, where we think you're going to be next year. Um, and this was, is with no changes whatsoever, um, if you look at line sixteen, you see how we've lost three percent margin. And that's just from inflation. And, um, you know, you have. And um, you know, you have, so there are two main adjustments that we recommend for electric rates um, for municipals. One is a monthly adjustment, which is a purchase power adjustment, and you have that. So when you have a wholesale energy purchase power change and cost, it's passed through to your customers. So that will keep you whole as that part of your expenses um, changes and and go and likely it's just going to go up. But then that's about sixty-five to seventy percent of your total expenses for your system. The other thirty percent are like lines five through eleven, you know, personnel, repairs, utilities, professional services, insurance, supplies. And all those things are not being adjusted for. I believe your present rate ordinance allows for an annual operating expense adjustment, but I don't believe it's being implemented right now. And we recommend that you implement that. And what that's a one-year, once-a-year adjustment. And you're adjusting that part of your rate. So if the, if your wholesale energy re- um, represents sixty-five percent of your expenses, then that thirty-five percent of the rate gets increased. I believe your policy right now is three percent. And we recommend you change that to five. Um, and implement it. So what you're talking about, then a five percent increase on thirty-five percent of the rate. So it's not a five percent increase. It's like a two percent increase overall. Does that make sense? But that's an annual automatic. And all that does is make sure that you are always tracking, you track as close as you can to inflation. So you don't find yourself that year over year, like in three years now, you'll be taking money out of reserve just to pay the bills. And that's what we want to try to avoid. So um, so that's one of our main recommendations is, you know, you're starting at a good solid spot. Um, and you have enough money in there to have your operation levels where they need to be. But we we are recommending that you first, you implement that operating expense adjustment. And make sure that annually you're changing, um, you're raising for to track with inflation. Um, the other thing that we're that we're recommending is um, a bit of a bump in the customer charge for residential. As we calculate through this, we we allocate your non-energy costs, which is line five through eleven, some to fix and some to variable, meaning that the fixed items are, you're going to pay for this no matter what, no matter how many kilowatt hours you sell. And then you have variable, which, you know, that's going to go up and down, like supplies will go up and down depending on, you know, can track with sales. The fixed item, those are the, that's the amount of uh, that you need to recover in flat charges from your customer because it doesn't matter how much they use. This is still an expense to the city and it's a flag spend. So we calculated that out and and we um, see a cost that's higher than what you're charging right now. And then as you take on more um, more, as you take on these interconnected customers with renewable energy, they're most all going to be residential. So that's going to raise an overall cost to your system. So we're recommending overall that then that we raise the residential customer charge up to twenty-five dollars instead of fifteen. And that's very competitive with your neighboring utilities. So if you raise that and you implement your operating expense adjustment, it will put you in a spot where you can maintain the um, level of reserves and build it to what you need to build and maintain your margins as you go forward. If you have a loss of a major customer, though, you're going to need to look at this again. Because it won't cover that.
Can you say that last part again?
So this is based on the load, the load profile the city has right now, which you have a customer that is a very large customer that has a very good load profile that pushes your average wholesale cost to um, pushes it down on average for the entire um, all the customers. If that customer goes away, then your load profile will shift a little bit, more demand, let um, less energy for the every block of demand. It will shift your average cost a little bit. The average cost will go up. Plus, you will no longer have their contribution to your overhead expenses. So you will have to look at this study all over again because there are some things that will have to change in order to pay the bills.
So for right now, you're recommending um, that the uh, the fact, the base rate for residential go up from fifteen to twenty-five. And then, I'm not quite sure how to characterize the other one, but it was um, five percent and around of around thirty-five percent of the total. Break it down for me again. Where where does the thirty-five come in versus the?
So, yeah, so that's an operating expense adjustment that's annually. And you're only adjusting the part of your rate that's attributed to non-energy costs, and that's about thirty-five percent of your rate. So in practicality, we have a spreadsheet where you back out your base in your cost adjustment and of your rate, and then the differential gets adjusted by the five percent. So but that's what it effectively does. So my, if you're looking at the summary model, you look at lines five through eleven, those are what we call non-energy expenses. So those expense, that's about thirty-five percent of the total system expenses. So that's the part that you're adjusting by that five percent every year.
That all those lines five through eleven provide.
Together, together add up to about thirty-five percent. So.
Creation that would be done annually and then change some of those.
It changed annually, so it would cause, it causes your um, published rates to rise a little bit, but it's not a five percent increase. It's effectively like a two percent increase.
Because it's only its five percent increase of the thirty-five percent.
Right, right. And it's not a straight thirty-five percent, but that's approximately what it is. In, you know, logistically, what you do is we take the total published rate and then we back out the energy, the piece that's in your base and your energy charge and the differential gets multiplied by by the five percent.
Do, so we have the fifteen dollar fee a month that we charge each of our residential customers. Is there another fee that we charge for like our business owners and our industrial?
Commercial's fifty.
Commercial's fifty and large industrial's a hundred.
And they recommend that we change those.
Those are, those are cost appropriate right now. We would say, and what's not in this model to consider is potentially raising the kilowatt hour rate on the commercial and the large industrial to to bring those margins up closer with residential. Um, not that there's a huge gap because there's not, but in order to see, i- if you want to try to do something for all the customers, I think right now the, even though the residential will end up being a higher margin, it's really more about trying to get that cost cost appropriate on the customer charge. But on the commercial and industrial, we haven't modeled that, um, and we can, if that's the direction you want to head, but also raising their their flat charges are cost appropriate, their energy charges, you can, you can tolerate some movement in that. System-wide, um, you can live without it. Um, it would be a nice cushion, especially if there's a concern that in the next few years, you may lose one of those customers.
So so we keep the base rate for commercial and large employee bu- employer. But we, we, we have some movements there. We could increase the cost per kilowatt.
Per kilowatt hour, right. On large and commercial. The thing is, is you can raise it on commercial. And you could triple it and it's not going to impact your bottom line very much because there's such a small piece of your of your system, you know what I mean? So yeah, so that, but the other thing is you could say, well, hey, I don't want to go to twenty-five dollars for for my residential. Um, we could back it down a little bit and make up the differential in revenue by going up a little bit on commercial kilowatt hour rate. But again, since your residential customer class is so much larger than your commercial, what what you want to make up for residential takes a lot, a lot of impact on an individual com- commercial customer. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Did you say that you were also going to walk through a model where we do lose our large industrial?
We do. So if you look at, um, let me check my notes which one it is. So exhibit twenty twenty-three. Let me get down to the next. Okay, so if you see exhibit four, you'll see it says less large industrial customer. But so this model also has us putting in your operating expense adjustment every month as well. So um, I mean, every year. So trying to find the rate increase. Let me get to the one that doesn't. Okay, so if you go to exhibit six. Well, that's got a rate increase. I think I went past it. Maybe it's exhibit five.
We've modeled it with the annual operating adjustment, Verbal.
We don't have one that doesn't have the annual operating adjustment in it?
No, not for twenty twenty-three. Oh, wait.
What about exhibit four? Oh, it doesn't, doesn't say it on the header, but it's there. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so exhibit four will show you what happens if you lose that customer. There are page one of exhibit four. But this is this including the operating adjustments, which is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars um, at in twenty-three. So if you back the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out, everybody's negative. So now you're going to be taking money out of reserves to pay all your bills. If you don't re-implement your annual operating expense adjustment. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I said if we lose our larger residential customer, then you're you're regulating us to raise our residential percentage.
You're going to have to raise everybody.
Yeah, across the board.
Across the board. Because you won't have enough, so like right now, um, your in large industrial customer class contributes a lot to the to the operating, but the um, non-energy operating expenses. So your system is a size staff-wise that you really can't operate it with much smaller staff. And without that customer, it doesn't necessarily mean you're not going to need that much staff. So your non-energy expenses are not going to go down as much as the contribution to them is going to be lost.
So so like, for instance, the, we'll just say the electric department. When it comes to any work or maintenance done on that large customer that we're talking about, on a monthly to yearly basis, we almost absolutely do nothing because that becomes straight out of the substation. So if, so if if they were to go away, our workload for the city would not change, not one bit. It wouldn't change, not one bit, to be honest with you. You know, there might be a patient where the their bumper, their breaker bumps off, uh, because it's something that could go up there.
So time-wise, I don't think that it would impact much. Um, but dollar-wise, it does. And that's why, um, you know, they're they're attributed a chunk of cost just because when they need something and when when something for that customer needs to be replaced or upgraded or dealt with, it's much more expensive than a regular commercial customer. So that's why they're allocated that cost. Um, but their their rates recover that and contribute that back to your system. So will those costs go away? Well, they will, but they're not necessarily that much every every year, but they might be a lot more in one year and kind of amortized over that that time period. And my understanding is that this is maybe not as imminent as it could, it might have been a couple of months ago. So what we're saying here is if it becomes imminent or close to imminent, we need to look at this again. Because what you're doing right now isn't going to work.
You know, we need to look at it again. It's, you you should work up something to show us in that event tonight or or that's not a part of this.
Well, um, so I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought we did. I can quickly take that model that um, well, that, no, I'm sorry, that's what it.
If you're not prepared, I'm just asking. I wasn't sure if that was a part of it.
No, we modeled it. We modeled it, but we assumed that you were going to go ahead and put your operating expense adjustment back in place. And so that's what exhibit four is.
I'd be fine to show us that. That would be fine to show us that if that's what you modeled, because that's what you have ready.
Right. Exhibit four is what we've modeled that has um, that has the loss of that customer. But it also has your operating expense adjustment in there. And so that allows you in twenty-three, if you did not have that customer in all of fiscal year twenty-three, you would break even.
So instead of breaking even, we don't have something that will show us how to not break even, how to. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Oh, right. No, we did not model what you would need to do to all the customer classes in order if that happened. But if you look at line seventeen and you see that it's like a half a percent overall, but you have three and minus four, you'd have to raise all of that up to get it closer to ten to twelve percent. So that means that it's like a twelve percent increase on residential and a fif- a fifteen to eighteen percent raise on commercial. In order to make that happen.
Okay. So where that point two five two percent is, right now, we're at like eleven percent.
Correct.
So but it would be about point five two percent.
Right, right. And this again is assuming you go ahead and implement your operating expense adjustment that you have in your, we modeled it at five percent, but you have, I believe, three percent was in your your ordinance right now. But that assumes that that's what you're um, that you are doing that as well. Now, if you don't do that, then it's even more negative.
I would worry that maybe we'll change it from the start setting you up for.
Yeah.
Either way.
Well, and I don't want to run into a situation where we're going to have to increase rates twelve, fifteen to eighteen percent at one wheel school.
Now, Verbal, based on the study that's done, you've got the change in the residential base going up ten, going up ten dollars. And then the five percent increase to the non-energy expenses. But you also say if if council wanted to look at increasing some additional cost towards commercial industrial, you can put that together prior to us adopting this. Correct?
Yeah, I can.
And that's.
We can, we can show you what that looks like right now. Um, and then you can decide. And we would still put the model in the final report and then put obviously that in the rate recommendation. Um, the the draft rate ordinance, but we can show you what that looks like. Um.
Yeah, I I mean, I would mind seeing it. I'm more concerned some of our business owners are not, you know, may not be comfortable enough for any increases, but our industrial may be very comfortable in a few increases. That that's what I'm thinking from here without seeing it. Now, now, it, we also, I mean, alongside that five percent increase of that thirty-five percent, do we also need to implement that adjustment for the residential kilowatt hours as well to?
Just just the base charge right now.
No, just the base charge. The residential kilowatt hour charge is appropriate.
It it is. Okay, that's what I was wondering. If that needed to be adjusted, even if it's like a one or two percent or something, so that we could slowly gear up because if we.
We had talked about doing that.
So your annual operating expense is going to do that. The annual operating expense adjustment is going to slowly inch it up to where you don't find yourself in a situation where you have to do a fifteen percent rate increase.
Right.
At one time or a twenty percent rate increase at one time. So if you put your annual operating expense adjustment together with your monthly um, wholesale power adjustment, that will keep you as long as your demographics and your low profile of your system looks similar, meaning that you don't like get a thousand more houses in, or you lose a subdivision, or you lose a big customer or gain one. So those demographics stay pretty consistent, then you won't need to do step increases at all. So that's the beauty of having those annual adjustments. So you see it like a one or two percent or three percent every year, but that's all you see.
Yeah, because right now, what is the?
You're talking, you're talking about like, if you're going to do the, like, say you're going to do a one or two percent increase every year, right? Yeah, and you're lo- and you're looking at like, so we're going to do a one or two percent adjustment. But we want to be prepared for when exodus of this industry. So maybe instead of doing a one or two percent, we should do a two and a half percent. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying at least two percent. I'm thinking.
To make sure the bases are covered.
To make sure the bases are covered because as 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 just a stair step adjustment for now, because my concern is for later.
Yeah. So that if if when it does happen, you're covered. And if it doesn't happen,
I definitely say, well, we're not going to raise rates this year.
Right, but but if we're.
You're being proactive.
I just, I just, I just am concerned that uh the trend that it's going in my gut is that we're going to eventually lose a large portion of the revenue because of a chain in large industry. And so I want to make sure that we are covered, so we don't end up with stair stepping. It's a little easier to adjust than going into a, let's let's, yes, increase the base rate, but hold off on the adjustment rate. I'd rather just do it, do a small adjustment and cover our bases.
So that's basically what they're recommending to do, I think is what you're saying. Uh, it's automatic.
No, she's recommending the base rate, there's two residential that she's putting, and then the five percent on the line, energy cost each year going forward.
I understand that, but what about the energy?
But if you want.
That's what I'm asking.
They look at the energy cost profile, correct, Verbal, of kind of where RPGI had given you information on what our wholesale cost will be for the next few years?
They, yeah, they were pretty um non-committal, but it is going to go up.
See, I'm concerned about that, energy, the energy cost end of it.
Well, that that part you will collect, because that's passed on, corrected. Through through, I mean, the stuff we, through RPGI, it's.
So you're going to be passing along any increase you get from RPGI, and you're going to be pa- um passing that along um i- in your customer uh in your customer charge, I mean, sorry, in your cost adjustment every month, you'll be passing that along. But what's going to happen is you're going to see that organically anyway. No matter if you have this large customer or not, organically, you're going to see rate increases be just because the wholesale, the cost of wholesale energy is expected to continue to rise over the next decade.
Let me just try to make sure that everyone in the room is clear about what you're recommending, Verbal, um, in this study. So two increases you're recommending right now, potentially a third, but two for sure. For residential customers only, the base rate goes from fifteen to twenty-five.
Hmm.
For all customers, a five percent annual automatic increase, so five percent every year without council taking any action of the non-energy portions of
Right.
utility. You will actually pass like ordinance and have that automatic deal, so that it it doesn't have to come back. Once you pass that ordinance, the staff will just automatically cheer, that will go up five percent.
Right.
And do we?
That's what this study calls for.
Yeah, and do we? Percent already?
I don't think previous council did it.
No, but we can.
We can do that, we should, probably.
Because that's what they base their.
We really want, we we really want it to survive.
Survive.
But I think the other question is, if you want to look at your commercial and industrial, she can take a look, provide a recommendation where she thinks you could tweak that a little bit to help offset potentially that down-the-road long-term cost.
I guess once we do this, ordinance recommendation. How far along do you recommend, Verbal, that we're raising our five percent, that like five-year, ten-year, or is that an infinite? At a deal?
Did you hear that question, Verbal?
I didn't, no, I'm sorry.
Councilman Martin has asked, um, with the five percent going forward, are you recommending that for a certain number of years or kind of?
It's in perpetuity, because the idea is that that is there to offset the cost of inflation. Um, and as it increases all your customer, all your non-energy costs every year. However, is very common, whenever you look at your financials and you see, hey, you know what, I think we're okay, that councils have voted to to avoid, like, to not do it that particular year. So that is actually pretty common, that not to, that you just vote not to do it if you see that you're okay. Like, you cost it and go up like you expected they would, and you can make it a year without doing it.
So then the other recommend, I mean, Councilmember McFerrin is uh kind of would like to see what it would look like to raise rates per kilowatt hour for residential. You're not recommending that today, but Councilmember McFerrin is interested in that. Are there other members of the council that can we just kind of put a consensus? Is that something we want to look at or not? Are you looking at residential or you looking at commercial and industrial? I wonder, are you looking at?
I don't know, I guess.
If you're going to do that, it should be across.
So if you're going, okay, so there's a couple of schools of thought here. So you can raise rates like a certain percentage across the board and just leave them the leave the structure the way they are now. So that's that's an option. Um, and that's that's easier to explain to your customers, because then everybody gets the same percentage increase, okay? However, the cost for serving, the fixed cost to serve a residential customer, are not being covered right now by your customer card. So that's not where I recommend putting it, but that doesn't mean it's where not where it that it can go. At the end of the day, your system is going to see the same amount of revenue, it's just a matter of how you get it. So if you make it ten dollars a customer per month, everybody pays a ten dollars per customer per month more. But their percent increase is impacting them differently. But as far as it goes for commercial and industrial, any recommendation that we would have would be a kilowatt hour, a cost per kilowatt hour change, and I would recommend that you do a penny kilowatt hour on the um up to a penny on the industrial and um up to a penny a kilowatt hour on the commercial. And that's going to push you in the mid-teens um of revenue, and then it puts you in a position that if you.
I mean, that that sounds reasonable.
Why don't, why don't we, does that sound reasonable if we have, if we have a look at that?
Okay, we'll model that, send that separately, so we don't overwhelm you with much more paper. We'll send that model by itself. And then do you want me to go ahead and have the operating expense adjustment in there? And the, so the residential ten-dollar change, the penny for the kit for um commercial and industrial, and then the operating expense adjustment change in there, project what twenty-three looks like?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we should be able to get that to you by the end of the week.
Okay, that sounds good. I think we're going to consensus there on that.
Okay, great, well, and then if you guys decide that's the model you want to go with, we'll finalize the report and get you a rate ordinance um format, uh like the rate ordinance information, so you can get that passed.
Yeah, okay. Are there any by council, otherwise we'll wrap this up here, I think. Okay, all right, thank you so much, Verbal, appreciate your.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, is there anything else we need to do here? We're going to use a short break if you like. Yep, okay, we'll run into work session here.